Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we have roll call, please?
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sevenick.
Here.
Alderman Collier.
Here.
Alderman Krueger.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Grady.
The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If you'd like to make a comment, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address, and you have five minutes to speak.
The Park Board. Pardon me?
The mic wasn't on.
Oh.
Got you going now. You're all good.
You're okay. On the agenda tonight is a motion for installation of a fee to rent out an area of the Harbor Masters Building. I've been up here numerous times before. My concern is not so much what's going to go in there, but my concern is that the process by which it's going forward. According to city code, and I've mentioned this over and over before, any -- the Park Department is an advisory committee. They don't have the authority to enter into contract labor agreements or leasing agreements, and it says here, "Powers of the Park Board to recommend to the council and the planning commission the buying, leasing, selling, or transferring of lands, as well as the leasing of buildings and boat slips within the Manassas Marina." None of this ever comes before the Plan Commission or the Common Council. What they're trying to do now, it started out as a lease, and when I brought this forward, then they changed it to rent. Now they're trying to classify this area as a storage building. You know, it's like they keep trying to tweak it to make it sound more like, oh, we have the authority to do that. They want to allow a for-profit business to use publicly-owned facility on the waterfront. My concern is that it's going to open a can of worms, and the next thing you know, all of our parks are going to be infested with for-profit enterprise. And so now they're trying to call it, basically, it's a storage shed. Well, for example, and they want to lease it, rent it, or give it a fee for $75 a month. So, for example, there, I'm not saying you can't do that, but it needs to come before the council and the Plan Commission. It needs proper protocol. As an example, City of Sturgeon Bay, at their Harbor Marina, they have an agreement, a six-page agreement, and this is just, they're saying because it's on slab, it has no restrooms, it has no heat, that it should be considered a storage shed. Here, this is a rental of a slip, an outdoor slip, a boat slip, for $2,500 a year. It's for docking space, seasonal storage of kayaks used in the course of providing guided kayak tours, and they forbid the ticketing facilities or other tour guest-related uses of the premises. It's simply for storage of the kayaks. It's not even doing the actual business. And it's six pages, and it includes trash and recycling, signs, utilities, insurance with a $2 million umbrella, a $2 million liabilities, waivers that each participant needs to sign, hold harmless and indemnity, no subleasing, no alterations or modifications, repair of damages, environmental damages, non-payment of rent, breach of contract. I mean, so it's a contract. There's more to it than just making this a simple fee. Another example, and this is one where it's actually run as a kayak leasing place with concessions, which is what this kayak group originally wanted to do, was sell concessions. And that includes 5% of the annual sum of the total adjusted gross receipts on the sale of rental products, like T-shirts and everything else that they might be selling with it, 20% on the receipts of the instructional programs, rental and guided tours, at $250 a month, with a security deposit of $5,000. So, I mean, there's more to it than just simply saying this is a storage shed. That's why it needs to go through the Plan Commission and the council to bring up things like this, that do we want to do that.
Mrs. Taylor, you're over five minutes.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
(inaudible). Paul Racine, get up here. A little taller. Larry Konetski, 222 Lake Street, Manassas. I'm here on behalf of the Manassas Association and a Manassas Max baseball club. I'm here to present a check in the amount of $1,500 to the City of Manassas, designated to be used for Coswell Park dugout improvements. In 2017, the Max celebrated our 69th year of baseball played in the City of Manassas. Our mission statement for the Max is to promote athletic sports, recreational activities, and create pastimes that foster sportsmanship, fellowship among the members of the organization and the general public. Throughout our history, the Manassas Athletic Association has been active in the community and contributed to numerous activities, like the Trestle Trail, Community Fest, and so forth, projects and teams. And with the donation, our intent is that future teams across all level of play have a facility that safely and comfortably enables them to play the game of baseball, and it continues to be the premier facility for amateur and high school and baseball teams in the area. We, the Max, look forward to continue being part of the ad hoc committee of the Park and Rec Board, working to improve Coswell Park for baseball. We had a meeting in October, and now that the football season's over, we're going to get together with the high school coaches and everything, so I got a check for $1,500.
And Brian, would you like to?
Brian, would you like to get that? (applause) There you go.
Appreciate it.
Pretty much so. Can't wait for the meeting. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Lenth, 537 Broad Street. I came to the council back in June when they were talking about the city owning the bridge, and I was assured by the several council members that it was their job to find the money when I asked them not to be taking it out of my taxes. And I'd like to know at some point in some form where that money's coming from, if they've found the money yet without taking more money out of my taxes. I'd also like to reference the referendum coming up. I lost where it was.
(inaudible).
Okay. Okay. It's our 27-17A resolution, place an advisory referendum on April 3, and introduced by Alderman Taylor. I think this is a great idea, because then it will let all the members, or the city residents actually vote on this and decide whether or not they want the bridge. I still say that we do not want to own a bridge as a city, and I still stand by that. But I'd still like to know from the council where that money's coming from.
Christopher Evenson, 523 Broad Street. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of myself and my wife, 20-year residents at Broad Street. We fully support Alderman Taylor's proposed referendum to rehab and not replace the Racine Street Bridge. I've been active in the discussion of the Racine Street Bridge replacement, have looked at the options, have spoken to the council before on one of the issues involving the roundabout. So it's a matter that's dear to our heart. It's a half-block from our home. I've also been active and was active in monitoring the demise of our steam plant project, which resulted in a $40 million city debt and downgrading of the city's bond rating. I actually paid for copies of the depositions in the litigation involving the steam plant, which included our former mayor, utility manager, and others. From that sworn testimony, I concluded that the City of Manassas had no business owning a steam plant, despite the good intentions that the mayor at that time had in preserving jobs. As I understand it, if the state replaces the bridge, they cover the cost, including the condemnation of Doc Larson's building and others. But that's it. The state pays a one-time cost, washes its hands, and then we own the bridge. Do we know what is involved in bridge maintenance and repair, what that costs? Do we know what it costs to insure a bridge? What if it's poorly constructed and we have to replace it early? Are we going to be setting aside a million or two per year to replace the bridge in 50 years? Because that'll be our responsibility. Why not set up some kind of a fund like that, extend the life of the current bridge, and then we've got time and money to learn how to operate a bridge if we're going to ultimately take over the ownership of this thing? I know there's been talk about a change in the state law so that the state maintains ownership, or perhaps a change specific to Manassas, since we are part of the Lox system. But if we repair the bridge and the law changes so the state maintains ownership, fine. They can do with it whatever they want, whenever they want to replace it. But the bottom line is that the citizens of Manassas deserve a referendum to be heard on this major discussion on a vital and expensive piece of infrastructure. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening?
Hi, I'm Bonnie Dolphus.
Whoops, I'm sorry.
Tax bill. My taxes went up $50, about $50, and that's unacceptable. Mayor, and all aldermen who voted for this tax bill, we're number one in taxes in Manassas. Wow, pretty good, huh? I'd like to thank all the aldermen that voted against the mayor's budget. Thank you. Mayor, you are fiscally irresponsible. I can't believe how you passed this budget. The State of Wisconsin, you should keep the bridge. Manassas doesn't need the taxes and a higher, any higher. And mayor and council, let the citizens vote for the referendum for a new bridge. We don't need a new bridge. No. Let the citizens vote for this new bridge, and I would vote no for a new bridge. We don't need it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the report of department head staff and consultants. I'm not sure how long my voice is going to hold out tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to Chief Seka regarding the, or are you doing it? Pam?
I can start.
The Narcan presentation?
Thank you. I wanted to bring this to the attention of the Common Council and the public, and it has to do with the, I think we need to be aware of the dangers that our employees, public employees, are exposed to. Law enforcement, but not only law enforcement, other public employees as well. And one of them has to do with fentanyl, exposure to fentanyl. And if anyone has read about in the paper or heard anything on the news with regard to those types of exposures, it only takes about five or six, kind of the size of grains of salt. It's a powder, and just about five or six grains of salt. If they're in the air, it can be inhaled. If it's on the skin, the skin can absorb that fentanyl, and it can cause an overdose. And if you read about in the paper and on the news, heard something that, unfortunately, we did have occasion in the City of Manassas where an employee was exposed to fentanyl. But I think what is also important, not only to be aware of the dangers that our employees are exposed to, but what came out of that as well. And I think it's important for us to know what came out of it. We, there were various departments that came together and were involved in developing what a response could be to this particular workplace exposure. And in an effort, obviously, to protect our employees, as well as protection of other communities' employees. And what we have queued up and will show in a minute is the Police Department and the Wisconsin Department of Justice put together a video, which is going to be shown to other law enforcement agencies across the state of Wisconsin. It will be shared, informing other departments of what could happen and how fast it can happen. In addition to that, there was a, what we call PPE, or I have to think of what it stands for.[1054.21][1054.21](laughing) Yes, thank you. Personal Protective Equipment, yes, for potential fentanyl exposures. So we, or the Health Department and the Police Department worked together, particularly Todd Drew, with our Health Department to put together a kit that is now contained in all of the squad cars, to ensure that our employees are protected. And of course, this is something that just came up. And so everyone went to action and put together this kit. We did get some funding through our insurance company, and our insurance company became involved as well. And as a result of looking at this incident and how it obviously could happen anywhere, our insurance company was going around to, throughout the state, meeting with and training, giving training to other civic members, and was providing Narcan. And Narcan is like an anecdote to an overdose. And it is, a couple of doses were provided to each of the civic members so that they would have them available, and also training on how to administer in the event of an exposure. We also sent employees from other departments to this training. The one that was held in this area was held at the Manassas Police Department. And we sent other departments to that training as well, so that all of our employees are informed in case there would be some type of an exposure, because it just takes so little. Library personnel, if somebody happens to have some on their clothing, and there is a person who's a drug addict is in the library, if someone's coming to pay a bill, our code enforcement, perhaps, if they are going into homes, or the Health Department going into homes, utility maybe going into homes, and if there happened to be any drugs in that home, there could be a potential exposure. And of course, the highest risk would be for our fire and law enforcement. I think I've mentioned, yes, that our insurance company as well, there was a policy that was put together by the Police Department and the Health Department, and then that was, and the contents of this kit. And our health, or our insurance company is taking and using this policy that was developed in-house by our folks, and is being used as a model around the state. And perhaps we can, if it's queued up and ready to go, we're not going to show the whole thing. It's about 15 minutes, but I just thought that perhaps we could show a little bit of Abandoned houses, our officers and some of our code enforcement can come into contact with drugs that are left in an abandoned home, and it's a very real problem.
Just wondering, is this something that we can share then on our city's website and also on the police website?
And we'll ask.
IT, if they can do that?
And we'll ask, well, the video is actually only going to be used with law enforcement, the video's actually only going to be used for law enforcement purposes?
Department, I've been here about two and a half years now, and just wanted to share with you my experience or my exposure that I had. Myself and other officers were dispatched to the 900 block of Third Street here in the City of Manassas for a male that was not breathing in a car in a parking lot. I'm first arrived there, shortly followed by the other officers. I looked to my left and observed a Pontiac with two individuals standing next to it. I figured, yep, that's for sure got to be where the individual is. Get on my squad car. He's in the backseat, laying down, he has a blanket over the top of him. Immediately grabbed onto him, I could tell that he was still warm, so something, this had to be recent, he hadn't been there for a long time. So I first made contact with the male individual in the back of the car. Obviously, we checked for signs of life, and when I first touched him, obviously, I checked for a pulse. It was not, yeah, I didn't feel anything. He wasn't breathing, but he was still warm. And when I was trying to get him out of the vehicle, I could still move his arms and legs and head pretty easily, so it made me believe that he wasn't in that back of the car for very long. And his friend estimates that the last time they saw him breathing would have been about 20 minutes. So this happened in a timeframe of only 20 minutes. I'm just initially looking in the car for first quick glance. I don't see anything that would make me believe that this is drug-related at all. I do grab onto his shirt right near his head area. At this point in time, I don't have my gloves on. He's a bigger guy, probably around, like I said, 230. I'm a little smaller guy, so I had a hard time getting him out. Eventually, with the help of my lieutenant, we're able to get him out of the vehicle and place him on the ground so that Go Cross can start administering aid. Once he's down on the ground, I again start looking around the vehicle, trying to figure out what, you know, what could have caused this. The vehicle is completely clean on the inside. There's a few articles of clothing in there, and there's a blanket that he was laying in it, or that had covered him up while he was in the back of the car. So as CPR is going on, me and other officers are looking. It's about right after we take him out of the car and do CPR on him, that I put my gloves on and started doing a search of the vehicle. Again, search of the vehicle comes up, nothing found. Doing some more digging, we find out that he is a known drug user, preferably heroin and meth, and that he had previously been picked up in Oshkosh at Rock USA. And when his friend went and picked him up from Oshkosh, he was acting kind of strange, kind of tired, lethargic, didn't all too be with it. He didn't think it was alcohol-related, because there wasn't anything that would show that it was alcohol-related by any means. Coming to find out, we're able to find where his actual car is located, at the Plainview Truck Stop in Oshkosh. So while we're still on scene there, obviously, he's pronounced dead. My lieutenant gave me the responsibility to go and locate the vehicle and see if there's anything in it that would explain what caused this man to die, look for any sort of drug paraphernalia photographed, like photographed the car, and then report back to him as to what I found. So shortly thereafter, I still have my latex gloves on. Right before I went to leave, I got a little bit of allergies, and so I wiped my nose, take my gloves off, and then placed them in my squad car in the cup holder. And then as I'm driving to Oshkosh, I'm on Salton 41, and I remember being right near the M Shuttle freight sales site, so I remember the moose that's always on that sign. Right about that time, I get extremely hot for about 15, 20 seconds, and I thought it was just, you know, it was an adrenaline, I felt adrenaline moment before. It was hot outside, maybe I'm just dehydrated, I didn't eat all that much that day, you know, something that I did. Real hot for 15, 20 seconds, and it goes away. And I'm like, wow, that was weird. And then right after that, I get dizzy, kind of confused as to, you know, I know where I am, but I'm not feeling right. At that point in time, I'm thinking, you know, am I overreacting? Do I just continue to go to where I need to be? Which is what I remember looking at a sign, it was about eight miles from where I needed, from where I was to where I needed to be to get the car. At that point in time, I started feeling real, just kind of weak, numbness and tingling in my legs. It actually starts in my legs, feet area, where I'm just tingling. It's numb. My hands are numb, my legs, or my hands go numb, arms are numb. This is when I know something's wrong. And just from, we've had numerous emails and just kind of updates as to fentanyl, you know, some of the side effects of it and the dangers of being exposed to it. And that's right at this point in time where I figured I definitely had some sort of an exposure. I mean, all my anxiety was, when this was all going on, it was through the roof, because you start thinking, you know, I'm not going to see my friends again. I was due to get married in a month. I'm like, I may not make it to the wedding. You start thinking about, you know, I could have done this differently, could have done that differently. It was just an overall scary experience, and, I mean, there's nothing worse than being in a car and you're feeling the experience by yourself, no one's around, and you can obviously sit there and reflect on, you know, you're not going to see your friends again, or never see my parents again, my brother, or anything like that, so it sucked.[1751.13][1751.13](laughing) So I went and reached for the mic, which is attached to a large magnet, so it doesn't move around. As I'm going to pick it up, I can't pick it up. It takes me two or three times to yank on it or to pull it up. Finally, I'm able to get it up, and I'm like, dispatch, no, something's wrong. I'm right near the exit to where the Winnebago County Sheriff's Office is. They can have an ambulance just meet me there. At this point in time, I can just feel my whole body is starting to shut down. I kind of described it as, if you're really tired and you just don't want to move anymore, that's exactly what I was feeling. Also, my heartbeat, I mean, it was pounding, but even though my heartbeat was up, I could feel my breathing starting to slow. feel my breathing starting to slow down. Eventually, I'm able to make it to the sheriff's office where I pull into the front parking area there. And shortly thereafter, I get out my squad car, I start taking off my uniform, my vest, my duty belt, and it's right then and there that a deputy from the Winnebago County Sheriff's Office pulls in right behind me and he's there kind of talking me through, asking me what's going on. I take a seat on the curb and I can still feel all the symptoms, the tingling in my arms is getting worse, I just, I mean, and I believe I told him I just wanted to close my eyes and fall asleep. And that's when he asked me if I wanted the Narcan. He said, it's not going to hurt you at all to try it or to do it, it can only help you. So I'm like, I'll take a dose of it. So he gives me one dose, he uses the one that you can take up, shoot, it shoots up your nose. So he gives me one of that and I was given my first dose of Narcan about two or three minutes after that, I still was feeling the same symptoms that I was before, nothing got better. And that was when they gave me my second dose of Narcan. Right around after that second dose, the fire department paramedics show up, they start taking my vitals. And I estimated about two minutes after that second dose, they asked me if I can stand up. And I'm able to stand and walk on my own, still a little bit rubber-legged, just from the whole experience, but my symptoms are gone. I don't feel like I wanted to fall asleep anymore, the numbness in my legs are completely gone, I'm completely aware of my surroundings.
So I just wanted to give you a flavor of the officer's experience there, and as I stated, this was put together and I think Chief Steika can give a little bit more information about it.
Yeah, I think you've pretty much covered it, I know there's a lot on the agenda, so basically this video is created by Training and Standards to, as the city attorney said, to really try to get this message out. There's been a lot of information that I know that's been put out through law enforcement channels prior to this. It was one of the reasons why about two weeks before this incident, we actually trained all of our folks on the use of Narcan, because we decided that, you know, the fire department and Go Cross have been doing a phenomenal job, we've yet to lose someone that hasn't been able to get it, but we also realized that there was the potential of an officer or someone being exposed and to have that right there and then would be valuable. Well, sure enough, two weeks after the training, I think that's what kind of paid off with Officer Abraham said, because he recognized the signs and symptoms that he learned about in training and made some good decisions to get himself the help and was obviously able to recover from this. Then to echo the other thing the city attorney said, which I think is just phenomenal, is the work that Todd Drew put into this afterward. It just kind of shows the collaborativeness of all the departments, where he was able to come up with this whole PPE program, assemble these kits, came in to numerous briefing trainings, he's still doing some mask tests for us, but it was recognized as no one knew what to do with this stuff. And the work that Todd put into this, as Pam said, was taken by CivMec, it's been distributed to all of our members, I've had other agencies contact us, asking what we're doing with this stuff. So really, he was a trendsetter and something that could be unfortunate for another municipality as well.
So a terrible thing we hope none of our employees would have had to have experienced, but unfortunately it did and thankfully, there was a positive outcome, not just for that particular employee, but for others, we're hoping, throughout the state. And then, like I said, training our other employees as well. And we do have Narcan available here in City Hall too, at the Health Department. So we, it's important that if administration is needed, that it occurs quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know who the directness question, but what about our sanitation workers, they're out there removing things on the curb from people's homes and do they have this training too?
Yes. And, thank you. Thanks for asking, because that was a group that I forgot to mention, but we did have sanitation as well at this training.
Yeah, all of our public works facility, or all of our public works facility employees got this training about two, three weeks ago, so.
And our park department too, because they're in our park system and these people are out there too.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we, Director Tungate has another check to be presented to him this evening. The Pay Setters are here this evening to talk about a donation to Loop the Lake. Ned, did you want to?
Christmas gifting spirit at Park and Rec, huh?
Hi, Brian.
Want to say a couple words about this?
Yes, that'd be great, sure. Let me... Mayor and Alderman, the city of Manassia, I'm very excited to be here tonight to represent the Pay Setters of the Fox Cities Running Club. Exciting moment for the Pay Setters and we hope also for the city of Manassia. Just by way of brief background, the Pay Setters Running Club was founded back in 1984. The Pay Setters are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. In, as far as our size and impact here, our club membership right now, we have over 400 paid members here in the Fox Cities and we're a very active organization, not just focusing on running and walking and fitness, but just really looking at a focus of health, wellness, and fitness. We're very excited about the upcoming in-construction Loop, the Loop the Lake Trail project, which is scheduled to open, as I understand, in June of 2018. So we fast forward from 1984 to 1995 and the formation of the Greenways of the Fox Cities Organization, which came together, a group of people that came together here locally here in the Fox Cities to work on the development of recreational trail projects and to coordinate communities here in the Fox Cities. The Pay Setters, we got involved in supporting some of the projects that Greenways was involved with. We fast forward from there to 2006. In 2006, the Pay Setters donated $1,000 for the completion of the construction of the trestle trail. Very exciting moment in time. And so now we fast forward here into 2017. In the spring of this year, the Pay Setters, we donated $2,000 to the Navigating Nina Manassia Trestle Building Fund to help get the two trestles built, help pay for the construction of the two trestles currently under construction, and very exciting. And now we come to this evening and this moment, the Pay Setters of the Fox Cities, we are here tonight to present the city of Manassia with a check for $1,000. This $1,000 donation is part of a $3,000 total donation that the Pay Setters are doing this week with $1,000 going to each one of the three communities involved in the Loop the Lake Trail. The 3.1 mile Loop the Lake Trail, when completed, which incorporates segments of the city of Manassia, the city of Nina, and the village of Fox Crossing. So this week, we are presenting each one of the three communities with a check for $1,000. That $1,000 is targeted specifically to be used by the city of Manassia for trail amenities, in effect, for the completion of the Loop the Little Lake Trail segment in the city of Manassia and any amenities which the city sees fit to be constructed on the trail when it opens in June of 2018. So it's my pleasure at this time to present to Mr. Brian Tungate. Brian, of course, is aware of what's happening here. But it's my pleasure on behalf of the Pay Setters to present to Brian and the city of Manassia a check for $1,000 and have fun with it.
Yeah, thank you. Sure.
Thank you. That's the big check.
That's the real one.
Here's the real deal.
Thank you, Ned.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I've been sick, Ned.
Thank you, Ned.
Item three is the minutes and communications to receive, do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for the council to receive minutes A through J and communications K through T.
So motion in a second, is there any discussion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask the chief a question. Should have probably brought it to your attention before, but everything was going on. But I noticed also, we did receive another check donation from the Fox Cities Marathon for, I believe it was $1,000.
Yes, we did.
And, but the thing is, is even though that we do receive that and it's appreciated, what type of, what do you do, is your department and that do for this, and does this even cover some of the cost?
Well, as part of the special events policy, they get billed just like anyone else does for an event that happens in Manassia. So they do pay their fair share of traffic direction, employee costs, so on and so forth, traffic barricades. So this is kind of above and beyond what they would normally pay for their services. And this was a gift basically given to us through the city. It basically goes to the general fund, but there's been some things that we've talked about for enhancing special events going forward that these monies could be used towards. So in essence, it's a gift that goes back to the general fund.
Okay, thank you. Because of the checks that were being handed out today, I thought I would bring this to the taxpayers out there, their attention that these organizations do pay for their services and that the Fox Cities Marathon Group did make a $1,000 donation to the city.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. On letter F, the Nina Manassia Fire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee draft minutes from last Monday's meeting in reviewing the minutes, I contacted the chief and we discussed what was recorded in those minutes. And although I did not support the amendment offered, I voted yes to the purchase of the fire truck, the final motion as amended, and I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. And the chief and I will work on some amendments that will come through at the next committee meeting.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item, item S, the police department accreditation, this is an outstanding accomplishment, chief, for your department. There's over 400 departments and agencies in Wisconsin and there's only 35 that have got to this status, so congratulations to your department and I just want to give you an applause for that. Thank you, sir.
Seeing no one else, could, whoops, I heard Alderman Zelotsky?
Thank you. Just on the letter N about the weight restriction Racine Street Bridge, I saw this come up when I was going through the post crescent and I never saw anything, the up-to-date, did we ever get a memo or something from the state that listed that they have $1.1 million in design and engineering into this?
I, after we got this, I knew that that would come up at today's, at today's meeting regarding the referendum, so I did reach out to the state and ask how much engineering they have put into this project and it is $1.1 million.
$1.1 million?
Yep.
And was that directly, I saw that there was a quote in the newspaper that he said, "Nothing with this weight limit is tied to the age of the bridge, it's all to do with how it was first constructed, that it was never made to retain that kind of weight."
Yep.
Okay, just making sure, because I didn't see that in this memo. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Director Josh, this, this weight limit should have been put out 65 years ago then, is that correct?
It's based on the DOT, you know, ratings, we don't, the city of Manassia does not have any, you know, structural engineers to determine weight limits of a bridge. That is 100% a state-owned, you know, state bridge, so they operated and that's, you know, so it's their weight limit, you know, so it just came out now that it's 30 tons.
But this was, according to your memo, there was something about this should have been put on earlier at some time?
I believe that it is related to the steel decking and some of the steel decking is a little thinner at this point. Now, whether that's due to corrosion or due to the actual design of the steel decking, I don't know.
In the future, we'd like to see the state documents on that when something's sent to you like that too.
It was just, it was actually a verbal communication that they were lowering the weight limit to 30 tons. It was an informal email that was sent to me regarding it.
I'm surprised, yeah, I'm surprised there wasn't a press release to the post crescent or something with that, so. I know the state does like to waste a lot of paper and send out a lot of extra stuff they should, so we should see something like that in the future. They should, we should be working on verbals, we should be working on documents from the state. Thank you.
As I said, we did receive an email regarding it and they were putting out their own press release, however, when they put out their press release, it was...
Even a copy of the, even a copy of the email.
It's literally two lines long saying that it's going to be lowered to 30 tons. So I can get you a copy of that.
Even a copy of that with their website on it, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G is the consent agenda, and there are 14 items on there this evening. I am going to let whoever makes the motion read them. Is there any one, does anyone wish to have any items separated this evening? Alderman Sevanek?
Yeah, I thought that would probably be the best thing first, so you didn't have to go through them all, because I'm going to ask that three of them be set aside. That would be item 12, which is the, because of the cost, the Pierce fire truck, and then in Park and Rec, item 13, which is the Harbor House rental fee, and then the Park and Rec fee reciprocity agreement with Fox Crossing.
Are there any other items that someone would like separated? Do we have a motion for the remaining items? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time... Oops. Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we approve the common council minutes, the administration recommendations, the board of public works recommendations, and the personnel committee's recommendations.
There's a motion in a second, could we have, oh, I'm sorry, was it Alderman Grady? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item 12 is the ordering and purchasing of a 2018 Pierce Impel engine. Do we have a motion regarding that? Ald, whoops. Alderman Sevanek?
Did you want to read it?
No, that's enough.
This is a long one. So basically, this comes from the Nina Manassia Fire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee that we recommend approving the ordering of the purchase of the 2018 Pierce engine and related equipment to replace a 1997 Pierce Quantum for the cost, not to exceed... Item 12 is the ordering and purchasing of a 2018 Pierce Impel engine. Do we have a motion regarding that? Whoops. Alderman Sevanek?
Did you want to read it?
No, that's enough.
This is a long one. So, basically, this comes from the Nina Manash Fire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee that we recommend approving the ordering of the purchase of the 2018 Pierce engine and related equipment to replace a 1997 Pierce Quantum for the cost not to exceed $559,240 of the approved, which was budgeted, the $590,000. Let's see, it's, how can I shorten this? Yeah. Nina Manash Fire Rescue shall provide an informal update to the Nina Manash Fire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee of any change orders that were approved after the vehicle was purchased, and will only gain approval of expenditures from the committee and both finance committees if the costs will exceed the budget of $590,000 and authorize the directors of both communities financing options from Pierce Manufacturing and approve the most advantageous financing option for both communities. In addition, authorize the Nina Manash Fire Rescue to sell the 1997 Pierce Quantum once the new engine is in service.
And a second by Alderman Krueger. Is there a discussion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you. Actually, I think what Alderman Nichols was referencing earlier was that the, the cost possibility was something like $580,000, although we budgeted $590,000. And the committee, which I'm also on, felt that it was important that we watch our dollars here and that the cost not to exceed the $559 figure, if there were added things, that it had to come back to that committee. A lot of times, you have to realize, this is a half a million dollar piece of equipment, and the fire department has a lot of different types of specs. And new rules come out all the time in the meantime, and every department's a little different. Now, I think the, the fire department, or the council in the past purchased a fire truck that didn't have quite the specs they wanted, and they ended up spending more money down the line. So, this committee wants to take on the responsibility to make sure that this doesn't get out of line and that we watch what happens. And if, if something we don't feel comfortable about, then it will be brought back to the councils.
Chief Cullen, would you like to comment on that? That's not the way I read this motion. The way I read this motion is, is that it says that you're authorized to spend up to $590,000 without it coming back to the council. Am I reading it wrong, or is that where we're going?
I think that's correct, that it wouldn't come back to the council unless it exceeds the $590,000. I think Alderman Stevenson from Nina, as Alderman Sevanek had stated, that if it got over the $559,000 with change orders, that it would be a courtesy to come back to the joint finance committee, just to make them aware of any different cost changes in the, in the truck, which we don't foresee. But if that happens, then we would bring it back to joint finance, and then they could review it and, and go forward from there.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I've talked to you about budget items, and, you know, I know in the past, we've ordered trucks that weren't spec trucks. We had to have them in a hurry, so we took one off the shelf, if you will, that was ready to go. And I know at that time, you have to have a hat on. I see all the paperwork on how this was carefully looked at. We even went out this time, which I encouraged, to look at other dealers and try to get the best price for the community. I think the committee did their due diligence and really specced this out. And I'm not in favor to see this truck is specced out. This is what we need. I'm not in favor of seeing this growing from $559,000 without council approval. And just by adding some more equipment on there, just to add equipment. It's been specced out. We've told them what we need. This was the price, and that's a lot of money. So, I for one would like it to come back to the council if we exceed this, just because we approved the 2018. When you show them that, we're looking at other competition, which we did. And we talked to them about their quality problem, which was addressed in the, at their quality. They've looked at improving their quality and given us a better product. And by doing all that, I felt we got a great price here. Now, I just hate to, for the taxpayers, you come in with a great price, and then all of a sudden, yep, we're back up to, I like to see us keep it at a, at a, at a good buy, which everybody worked so hard for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just again, a point of clarification here. The, we keep using the $590 figure. That is what was in the CIP budget, but the, the motion is not to exceed $580,000. So, there is no $590 figure. It's, it's $580,000. And I think what Alderman Stevens was trying to do here was, with his amendment, was to make sure that, that the Pierce, which the cost not to exceed $559,240 from the, just because it says the CIP budget, that, that number isn't necessarily what they can spend. That has to be understood. And that the Nina Manash Fire shall provide an informational update to the Nina Manash Fire Rescue Joint Finance Committee of any change order that were approved after the vehicle was ordered and will only gain approval for expenditures from the committee and both finance committee if the cost will not exceed the budgeted amount. And although it says in the minutes $590,000 here, it should be $580,000.
I think it should be $580,000. I think that's correct.
Then we do need to amend your motion, because the way it's listed on here?
Well, I read it, I read it differently.
So, what is, what is the motion that's on the floor?
Well, it shouldn't be $590,000 up there, number, although it says it's in the CIP budget, but the, but, the, I just read it. I'm going to have to go through that all again.
It, I guess it doesn't really matter what the committee, committee chose. You can make a different motion. I just want to make sure that everyone here knows what your motion is. So, what do we have as the motion at this point, Debbie? Just what's in the packet? So, you would just like this to say it will only gain approval if it does not exceed $580,000 then, rather than $590,000?
Right.
And so, anything under $580,000 does not need to come back to the council or the...
No, it doesn't. It goes through those two, it goes through the Nina Manash Fire Rescue, oh geez, I just lost my place here. Where am I?
So, it just goes through the joint finance and personnel committee?
Right. Both those committees.
Okay. So, they would approve anything over the original $599?
Which is what the practice has been.
Up to $580?
The $580, cannot exceed, just because it's in the CIP for $590,000.
Okay.
And what was the, your, the deputy?
Deputy G. Voss?
Yes, Voss. He indicated that he, he doesn't believe that it's going to exceed the $560 figure regardless.
Okay. So, I just want to be clear that this is the motion that you are moving forward with. It's a motion to approve the ordering and purchasing of a 2018 Pierce Imperial Engine and Related Equipment to replace a 1997 Pierce Quantum for a cost not to exceed $599,240, uh, $559,240, sorry, of the approved $590,000 in the 2018 CIP budget by January 31, 2018, to avoid the February 1, 2018 price increase. Nina Manash Fire Rescue shall provide an informational update to the Nina Manash Fire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee of any change orders that were approved after vehicles ordered and will only gain approval for expenditures from this committee and both finance committees if the cost will exceed the budgeted amount of $580,000 and authorize Director Isker and Director Jacobs to review the financing options from Pierce and approve the most advantageous financing option for both cities. In addition, authorizing Nina Manash Fire Rescue to sell the 1997 Pierce Quantum.
Correct.
Okay. So, now everyone knows what the motion is. Did you have other discussion then, Stan?
Nope, just thought I'd better.
I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear. You are not clear. Attorney Captain?
Well, it talks about providing an informational update about change orders. So, is there a requirement that change orders go to the finance, joint finance and personnel committee or not?
Chief? Chief is shaking his head yes as well as...
I believe so. Yep, if it exceeds the five, if the change orders exceed the $559,240, then we would submit the change orders or whatever changes were necessary to the committee.
Okay.
So, then we're all clear here then? You're still thinking. Okay. Alderman Taylor? It wasn't, it was just clarifying what Alderman Sevanek had.
Chief, I know when you purchase a truck, you have a sales rep that you deal with. Okay, now, will we, kind of just walk me through when we sell a truck, how do we sell a truck?
Usually the way...
You put it in front of my house with a sign on it.
Usually Deputy Chief Voss lists it on the Wisconsin site that has equipment from other cities on it. And generally, we've done very well on that site where we typically get more than expected for, for the sale of that equipment. So, he'll, it's almost like an auction-type site, and we've done very well in the past listing things on that site.
Okay. And then, how do we set the price on it?
Uh, what we'll do is DC Voss will call around and ask for, kind of do some research on what that year truck is going for. He will contact Pierce also, just to verify what they believe that would go for, and then we just set a price. We may bump it up a little bit, just to see if we can get it, to set a minimum bid on it. And we've done very well with doing it in that, that fashion.
Okay. And then, as the bids come in, I mean, let's say they come in way under what you think, do you just take the highest bidder, or do we...
Still take the highest bid then, yes.
So, we all can, everyone can see where the bids are at any time on there?
Correct. It's kind of like eBay, where you can see the previous bid and...
So, any of us could look at it?
Yes. Yep.
Well, you and I were going to buy that one fire truck that time, then we backed out. It was going for next to nothing. Thank you.
So, Robert's Rules would require if people would speak more than twice, we'd have unanimous consent. Would we have unanimous consent to hear from Alderman Sevanek at this point? Alderman Sevanek?
That might be the rule, but in protocol, we've decided that that's a foolish rule and that we won't be using that. So, anyways, I just want to make a very important point here. Let's look at the year of this truck, 1997. How many of you in here drive a 1997 vehicle? Okay. This is our public protection. I think we're due this new truck. I, I believe, and I'm actually very proud of this fire department, how they've done their due diligence on this. So, I hope that you vote for this.
I heard 66 over there? Those would be great fire trucks.
That's right. I didn't mean collectors.
Alderman Collier, did I turn your light off, or did you, okay, I'm sorry. Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things. Are we amending this motion here, or is this staying as written?
It should be $580,000 in there?
The memo from the, from the fire department was very clear that the CIP was for $590,000. The motion for the recommendation from the joint personnel and finance committee was that it just wouldn't exceed $580,000. So, if you, the, the recommendation from the committee was very clear, in my opinion. Just with that being said, Chief, I have a question for you about the decision to sell this vehicle. I know typically, a lot of times when we're taking one out of regular service, we'll put it into a backup position. And could you explain methodology as to why this one's going to be for sale as compared to put it in for a reserve vehicle?
Sure. It's not in stone yet, but after having some meetings with our mechanics, they believe that this truck, because it has more bells and whistles on it, there's more areas of concern about needing repair down the road, even in the status of reserve for five years approximately. Some of the things that are failing on it are, they're having issues with the ladder rack, and so, having that come up and down, they've been replacing things that may not be replaceable down the road. So, the current truck that we have now that's in reserve is in really nice shape, and it has less items of repair as far as fancier pieces of equipment on it that we think we can make it through the next five years without having to have any major issues with it. So, it's not in stone yet, but that's the reason we want to try and sell this one first, so that we're not stuck repairing some of the things that may not be necessary with the current reserve that we have now.
So, is the resale on it a little bit better with the way that it's optioned out?
That's the other, yes, that's the other thing, is that we think we can get a little better resale on this truck versus the other truck.
Okay. So, and this one that we're looking to order, as Alderman Taylor brought out in the past, we've been buying demo vehicles and then paying to have them optioned out and seen it go for at least $10,000, sometimes more and stuff. So, this one at the $559,000 is already optioned out, the way that we desire to receive it?
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Is there any further discussion? Director Jacobs?
Just one other point of information. With us making, with us, with Manasha and Nina both making the payment, by the end of January, with, up before the price increase goes up, it would be another $20,000. So, it's important for us to lock in the price, get the payment made by the end of January with whatever means that both Nina and us decide on doing, if it's through financing through them, or if we do this internally with our own borrowing, that's something we'll be looking at in the next couple of weeks, but we'll bring that back to you for the Manasha side of the purchase. But it's a $20,000 up, that the price would go up on February 1st.
Again, Robert's Rules allows two times to speak. Is there, is there any objections? We wanted to go by Robert's Rules, so. Is there any objections, seeing done?
Uh, Chief, when would we take order, uh, when would we receive this truck?
If we were to be able to place the order in, in January, February, we would be able to receive it sometime end of September, October.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote? And it does say the $580,000. Once you get down further. This is cool, the way it scrolls.
Well, this is going to be a hard one.
It's, yep, you can see here. So, it's 7-1.
Motion carried on roll call 7-1.
Item 13 is the Park and Recreation Board recommending the permit fee for the use of the Harbor House room. Is there a motion? Alderman Grady?
I'd like to make a motion to set a permit fee of $75 per month and $900 per year for the use of the Harbor House room.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second from Alderman Collier. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. As this council knows the history on this, there were some of us that felt very strongly that all rental agreements go through the city council, and that wasn't necessarily followed last time. So, some of us thought that probably the way to handle this, because it's just a small space, is to... space, is to, to go along with the idea such as renting a park shelter or something like that. And that way we would, we, that was our, kind of our compromise on this and we all felt a little more comfortable about that. But I have been, you know, and then also too, Mrs. Taylor was making some good points about treating this like a storage unit or something. So funny thing that she had brought that up because I looked around, I'm also in the moving business and I looked at storage units and that's a darn good deal. So, and I appreciate the park boards looking at this. They did spend some time. And was that an objection or? But I think that it should be just a slight bit higher. I just think that, you know, looking around the valley and that you can't find anything for under a hundred dollars. So I'm gonna ask to, unless someone wants to speak first, but I'm going to offer an amendment eventually that it be at least a hundred dollars a month. But I'll let the other council members speak first.
Alderman Krueger?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Again, Alderman Sevenek explained quite clearly on the mindset on this and the park board. But Brian, I would like to ask you a few questions on how the park board came up with the, with the dollar amount. I understand that treating it as a storage space, but everybody is well aware it's not being used as a storage space. It's an actual front for a business, which is completely different. You can't run a business sort of a storage space. But just in comparables with what the other rentals that the city has, I mean, for a regular, a picnic rental spot in the park is thirty-five dollars for a day. The pavilion is eighty dollars for the day. What was the reasoning on trying to keep it at, I mean, below the, below a hundred dollars? I mean, me personally, I think a hundred and fifty would be, would be even a fine number for a business to be able to use it as a, as a front for the business. But was there any particular discussion within the park board on why this seventy-five dollar number came about?
Well, I think as you can read in the email or the memo that I have here, I think the park board really just wanted to take a step back and really look at the dimensions, look at the fact that it was unheated, really just take a complete objective look at what this was, has been. This has been basically a storage room and a lounge for the last fifteen years. And so, yeah, I mean, I think they wanted to take a realistic look at what it really was and, you know, and prior to the use last year, it, yeah, like I say, it was just a lounge and a storage area and it wasn't really serving any value. So we tried to, you know, sort of keep the, you know, the use of last year kind of out of it and just look at the space, what is it? And did, did a little bit of research on the, on the storage rental rates and I, you know, from the information I was able to gain, it was, you know, for, for a comparable sized room, one hundred and sixty square feet or so, I've, that's where I came, that's where I got the forty-five to sixty-five a month. Talked to a couple of folks in Appleton, shared that with me. So, yeah, I mean, it, you know, I guess the board felt like this is, it was really a tough space to kind of come up with a number on. It's not, you know, there's no restrooms there. It's, you know, yes, it's on the water, but in a lot of ways, it's, you know, like I indicated, it's a, it's a, used to be an overhang, a ticket sales window overhang. The park department put some walls up, you know, a few years ago and that's, that's what it is. It's, it's kind of hard to say that it's office space per se, but I guess that's what it was used for last summer. Kind of a, I don't know if, you know, if it's a, has all the amenities that a, you know, that a lot of, you know, organizations or uses might want, but this, you know, the one that worked, came in last year, you know, it worked out. So, yeah, I mean, I guess we wanted to just, you know, step back and just try to place a value on really what it was and what it is.
If it was strictly a storage unit, I think the seventy-five would be an appropriate amount if it was just being used as storage. But it is being used for a profit business, to run your business out of. So I will wait to see if anybody else has any comments, but I too would like to see it higher, hundred, hundred and fifty dollars a month, which is extremely, for a rental of an office space for a business is extremely cheap also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, could you bring some clarity as to what this space is gonna be used for?
Well, if, if everything stays the same as, as it was last year with this, you know, kayak company, I believe they're still interested in coming back and if they, they may or may not be the ones that we issue this permit to. So I'm not sure exactly of their intentions, but I, I think they're interested in coming back. But, you know, again, we were trying to just, you know, prior to last year, you know, we're trying to just kind of set that a little bit aside and just, you know, look at the space. So all of a sudden, you know, this area, you know, magically has some, you know, value that it didn't have two years ago. You know, if, if we were asking this question two or three years ago, would we be talking, you know, a hundred and fifty a month or, or would we be talking fifty a month? I'm not sure what we would be doing, but.
That's kind of what I was thinking and you didn't identify on here exactly who would be renting to and I assumed it was kayak company again. And when I looked at, at the cost, I don't disagree with some of the other aldermen about the cost, but I looked at the value that, that was giving to our waterfront as well that they're renting kayaks and creating like little mini tours, you know, guided tours with kayaks and things like that. It really helps out our, our exposure to the waterfront, brings more people down to the waterfront and I feel it's a worthwhile investment for us to make that affordable, to help make them be successful and to, and to help create that, that attraction for, for our waterfront. So I appreciate your, your input, even though we really don't know what that is at this point. My other question is probably for our city attorney and one thing that was brought up about our ordinance is these coming to the plan commission and coming to the council. And if that's accurate with our, with our ordinance, is there a reason that this did not come to the plan commission?
A permit fee does not go to the?
No, the rental. Well, and we're just, so because we're just calling it a permit fee, that it wouldn't, that it wouldn't have to come to the plan commission?
I guess I'm not sure what you're.
Well, it was brought up that if it's a rental, then it should come to the plan commission. And I'm not, I'm not really sure why, but I sit on the plan commission as, as our representative for the plan commission, so I'm compelled to ask a question. If that's what's in the ordinance, should it be going to the plan commission or is it not coming to the plan commission because it's just a permit fee? And it's not an actual rental agreement?
So you're not talking about something that's on the agenda today? You're talking about something else?
Um, potentially, it's the protocol for this as, that it came to us at this point as.
This fee would come to the common council to be established. It would not go to the plan commission.
And that's because it's a permit fee and it's not a rental agreement, correct?
Because there's, because it's a permit fee and that's how the ordinance reads?
Okay. So it's really, it's really the, a matter of how we're delivering the, how we're delivering the agreement. Is that it's through a permit fee and not so much a rental agreement, correct?
And they're, correct.
Okay.
By giving someone or by having it go through the common council and actually having a, people use that word, rental thinking a lease, but you rent equipment for a fee or you can rent park space for a fee. It does not mean that it is an actual lease, which is a, a leasehold interest in land actually gives somebody rights to use that land for whatever purpose you're, you know, allowing them to use it for. And that sets in motion a whole bunch of other legal rights to real property. That's probably not what you would want to do. When it's a permit, it can be revoked. You set the rules, you tell them what they're gonna do or what they can't do. You can, you know, and there's no interest in the land that really, from a city's perspective, would be the preference just to allow a, or to give a permit. So if that kind of explains it. Because then, when you're leasing something, you would go through, you would go to the plan commission and would go to the common council for a lease. That's correct.
So in this particular area, this is really no different than a boat slip or something like that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But it doesn't have to be that way. I mean, it's the common council that would decide that.
Sure.
If they want it that way. And then we'd have to make some changes to, to the ordinance.
But this is how it's presented to us today, is as a permit.
Well, you're, you're talking about two different things. What's before you today is just a fee.
Right.
So how something is rented is not what is before you.
Okay, I understand.
That's not on the agenda.
The question I have, seventy-five dollars per month and nine hundred per year. Yours telling me that they will pay us nine hundred a year if they got a business or can they just say, I'm gonna rent it for five months? Cause if we're renting it for five months or potentially for only five months and have it closed the rest of the year, then I have a problem with it. Yes, it's a good price, but nobody's been in there and I don't see nobody knocking down the doors to get in there. If it's a year, that's a cheap price for a year, but at seventy-five a month, I won't vote for it just because if somebody wanted to vote, take it for two months, how do you stop them? If they come to you first, then how are you gonna do it? First come, first served or who's in there now?
Well, there's a, the current agreement that we had goes until April first. We would, wouldn't treat this really a whole lot different than we do our other park spaces and facilities. In terms of rules and time of the year that we start accepting reservations and that kind of thing, we, we would just classify it the same way.
Two comments as well?
I was, in the question that was asked, could somebody just say, oh, two months? That is correct.
Thank you. Currently, how would this, are we, is it just being covered through insurance through the Harbor House right now, self insurance to the city or? I don't know if this works with a, a permit that, what happens if they trash the place or whatever else? Because it's a permit now, not a lease, so how do we, how does this affect with evicting
The attorney's saying that these are kind of questions that are a little bit outside of the, the realm of what the permit is, but I do get your questions.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to comment on them a little bit, but.
There are requirements for insurance when somebody utilizes space. So it's, it's the, there's a, and I don't know how much it is, but that would, I mean, I just don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, yeah.
But there are insurance requirements that would be imposed.
Increases per se. It scares me too that it's not heated, so I could see that if someone rents us out per year and then all of a sudden, we're paying the electricity on the place, they're just gonna put a bunch of space heaters in there and now it's heated. And then our cost goes way past seventy-five dollars per month. I don't know how the council feels that we should amend this, the price at a time or a year long at a time. Go. I'll let, I'll let Alderman Sevenek.
One other time to speak, so, you know. How do you do? I meant one time.
Alderman Taylor?
Use it well.
Yeah, gotta use it well, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I appreciate Alderman Sevenek and Krueger doing work on this in the past. And when we come to this permit, I, I, I don't like the word at all because we're not renting a pavilion, we're not renting a baseball diamond. This is a for-profit company coming to our city to rent a structure for hopefully a year here. And as the member of the public said before, look at this lengthy agreement that Sturgeon Bay has that they put together for almost the same type of business. And, you know, I look at other things with this, there's signage on the building. Nobody last year permitted them to put signage on the building. They parked on the street on the same side all summer long. Nobody gave them permission to park on the street with that permit all summer long. Other people have to abide by those laws. And I don't like us kind of dumbing down stored space. And I was wondering why, I was on the council, when we built this into a boater lounge, why, why don't we have this for a boater's lounge? That was the, the concept of it.
Well, I talked to Harbor Master Shabak about that and it, it really kind of lost popularity over the years, very little use the last few years. When we first started it thirteen or fourteen years ago, I mean, it was pretty popular, but it just, it just has lost interest, not, not being used a whole lot.
I looked around for stored space. I don't see any with prime waterfront development. I don't see any of them with customer parking. I don't see any of them with a restroom for the employees that are working there that we have in that building. We have other restrooms for their customers at the marina. Other storage facilities don't have that. Alderman Solinski made a great point. My wife and I were out for a walk tonight and it was a rental unit. The window was wide open and I said, there is somebody that doesn't have to pay the electric bill, you know, so. People do take advantage of that, especially in the colder seasons. But I would like to say first and foremost, I'm worried about with this lease, as it happened last summer, the safety of our employees in this community. Just setting up, using our property to have a for-profit business, to put people in the water in exposure to our, our community's waterfront, which is good. But they also, there should be something in the contract where they have to educate these people about the dangers of the water right there up the river from the house. And we put our fire department personnel out in that river and, and they have to respond as they did last summer. So that comes at a cost and they're renting the city property. That's why there should be a well-written document for this, that we cover all these things to protect our employees that are out there in the river. I'm, I'm in favor of a much greater cost than this. I'm in favor of a neck, of a much greater document than this and we're not gonna call it a permit. It's, we're leasing public property. We're leasing a, a structure to someone here in the city, Manasha. And this isn't a park permit thing. This is a lease of a structure. And as the public, member of the public said, look at the size of this document that Sturgeon Bay has. And there's no rush in this right now. I think we should, the concerns should be looked at and we should put together a document and really understand this completely. And I would like to see this held or postponed or tabled for a period of time here that we can work with the director and the attorney and maybe look at this more of a comprehensive lease than, than just a, a simple thing here. Cause we do have some things that are happening here last year that the rest of the public can't, can't do either. So I'm in favor of, of postponing or tabling this. I'll yield to Alderman Sevenek.
Thank you, Mayor. Just so that we, see, we're getting a little confused and I think the city attorney's been trying to emphasize this, is that we're not dealing with a lease. This is gonna be a, a permit fee. And I, I personally agree with Alderman Taylor. I feel it should be a lease, but this was a compromise because of the, what it is, you know. So, but anyways, a lot of good questions here. You know, the city attorney brought up insurance. I don't, I don't have any information. I don't, I don't have any information about that. Alderman Zalinski brings up some good points. I think there might need to be a deposit that's put down, if possible, if that's something you can do within a permit fee. Alderman Taylor brought up issues of signage, and then Alderman Collier brought up a good point about, you know, four or five months out of the year, they're not gonna be using this thing. So are we gonna require them to rent it for the whole year, or just the month? So you know what? Lot of questions. Let's send it back to committee. I see Brian's been writing a lot of notes, and let, we've got time, and let's address some of these issues and bring them back to the council. So I'll move it this time to refer it back to the Board of Public Works. Excuse me, the Park and Rec Board. Sorry. You don't want that, do you? No.
From Alderman Zalinski?
I didn't hear ya.
So could we, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And do you have all the information you need, Director Tungay, to get all the questions, hopefully?
I think so.
Okay. Item fourteen is the Park and Recreation Fee reciprocity agreement. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve Park and Recreational Fee, what is it? Oh, reciprocity agreement with the Village of the Fox Crossing for 2018, and to pursue a multi-year agreement with the Village of Fox Crossing, starting in 2019.
So a motion, a second, is there discussion? Did you have anything else?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No?
No.
Okay. Alderman Sevenek?
I'm done with this. I'm tired of providing services to Fox Crossing. We've done it our entire life, and then what do we get? And I know, reading the communications from the Park and Rec Board, that actually, city residents probably benefited last year more than the village residents, but I don't care anymore. I'm done with this. We, we have services that are not even comparable, that they're, they're getting in the city of Manassia, and the taxpayers keep footing the bill. I'm tired of it. So we gotta draw a line in the sand at some point, and this is where I'm going to draw the line. I'm not interested in a reciprocity agreement until we can make things more equal between each community, because we've been giving out our services to this commu, to this particular community for way too long.
Alderman Grady?
I echo some of your thoughts, Alderman Sevenek, but then I look out for the youth, the kids. They're, the ones that are gonna suffer, or not have some of these programs, and to fight over something, the dollars aren't there to support that claim, saying, you know, sure, we have our disagreements with the Village of Fox Crossing. I knew this, you know, would be a tougher sell, but not when you're looking at the children and the youth of our, our city, and the programs, and the things that they get out of this.
Seeing no further discussion? Are you ready? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call seven, one.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for December 6th through 14th. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 12/6/2017 through 12/14/2017, in the amount of $693,473.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did you get someone? Okay. Alderman Grady? Is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
I'm not gonna grand scan, but I'm gonna take one lap around here. I did talk to the director with an item at 7:31, 7:37?
7:31.
7:31, Caco Street, for asbestos removal on a private residency, and I was just, he was gonna give a comment to the director.
I actually probably don't, I'm not the right person to probably answer the question. I think the mayor might have a little more information on that. All I know is I drive past that house, that residence every day on my way to work, and the house is now down and leveled. So there must be some background story that I'm unfamiliar with, that the mayor could probably share.
It is, it is tore up.
It is down. It is down, and they've just, they got like dirt and everything all up top of it, so the site is totally leveled now.
Amen. We've been working on this for about three years.
So the city took action to raise that property, it did take us quite some time to get the contents removed from that property, and to actually locate the owner. We tried, I don't know how many times, to get that served to the current owner. In order for us to have it raised, we did have to certify that it was free of asbestos, and I don't know if there was anything else, but that was part of the cost to raise it. So you'll also see a bill for the raising of the building, and then we will place that on the tax roll for that property at that point.
Okay. So we, we couldn't get the payments upfront for this party?
No.
For the asbestos? I know they're gainfully employed.
We, we could not get them to take action on their own, no. And that's why we did issue a raise order, and they did not take action, so then the city moved forward with doing it on our, on our own.
And you said there'll be a demolition bill coming to?
There will be as well.
Okay.
I don't remember exactly what it was.
I know the neighborhood will be very happy. Thank you.
I don't know what the check, do you know what the check number was, Jim?
Check number.
The check number for that?
Oh, yes. Check number was on, was on page, combined page fifteen of the packet of the accounts payable, check number 59683, to Arrow Lock Incorporated for $900.
Seeing no other comments, could we have a roll call vote, please? You didn't want that house. It didn't have floors in a lot of cases.
Motion carried on, roll call eight, zero.
Item two is the beverage operator license application for 2017 through 2019. Is there a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the beverage operators' license applications for the 2017-2019 licensing period, per the memo dated December 13th, 2017.
Here's a motion and a second from Alderman Collier. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight, zero.
Item three is the appointment of elections inspectors for 2018-19. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenek? Did I get you or not? Try again.
Move for the appointment of the election inspectors, the list that we were given for the 2018-2019 elections.
There is a motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight, zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first item is Resolution 2717. Is there a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will make a motion to approve R-27-17, a resolution to place an advisory referendum on the April 3rd, 2018 spring election ballot, introduced by myself.
Is there a second?
Second.
Some motion and a second from Alderman Zalinski? Is there any discussion? Let's see. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. In realizing that this would be an advisory referendum, and also remembering that this process started in 2014, I think, was, action was taken in 2015, and it's now almost 2018. It seems to me that the time for an advisory referendum on such an issue would have been back in 2014 or 2015. Action has already been taken multiple times. The DOT has already invested over a million dollars in the project. Things keep moving along, and we are all well-aware and informed of the deficiencies on the bridge. So I feel the time for a referendum was back in, in 2014, and if the residents wanted to come forward with a petition for a referendum, that would be another conversation, but at this point, for the Common Council to act on such a proposal, I don't support that at this time.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do agree with Alderman Nichols, to a point, that this has been discussed over and over again. The DOT made their decision. But what I'm looking at this as, is we also made a commitment to the residents that we were gonna try everything in our power also to try to get the state to take over the responsibility of the bridge, no matter what, even if they went with option J. And I'm looking at this resolution as a quiver, or as an arrow in a quiver, to have the electric actually come back and either say, "Yes, we want it," or "No, we want it," where we can actually approach the state and say, "Hey, look, you know, even our residents are saying firmly no to this," if that's the direction that it is. So I, I'm not looking at this as being able to overturn anything, because that's highly unlikely with the progression that is made by the DOT. I'm looking at this as a, as a tool to try to approach the state within the end, to try to get them to take back over the cost of the operation of the bridge after they do option J. And I just think, just being able to approach the state with a, with an actual vote on a referendum by the residents overwhelmingly, the yes, or it could be overwhelmingly no, will help and aid in the city in their argument on that point.
Alderman Collier?
Two years ago, I got voted in, and this was a hot, hot topic for two years, and it was the, the committee before me had to deal with it, and they voted for the bridge. And we, as a council, voted for the bridge. I did not see any aldermen here in the last two years ask for a referendum, or anybody two years before. I did not see anybody that is a representative now on the council come to a meeting and ask for a referendum. I think referendums are excellent, but in the right place. This is the wrong time for this referendum. I am gonna vote no, and I'm gonna be progressive and stay with the new bridge.
Thank you. I'm in favor of this, because Alderman Collier was right, the council did speak on this, and this council is in the majority of keeping a reconstruction for this bridge, not a whole new bridge in general. We want to rehab this bridge and not have ownership. That's how our council spoke, but we had a mayor veto, and things changed. But as I see in the recent document that we got, this 1.1 million dollars, we don't even have an official document on that, so I find that hard-pressed to believe that. And as far as deficiency, it's been fine for 65 years. It's been, as far as the document that's been released, it's been outperforming for 65 years by 10 tons, so we can't say we have an insufficient bridge. So I'm in support of this. Let's have the taxpayers who pay for this bridge make the decision.
Yes, I look at this, too, as, you know, we're not talking 75 dollars for a house down by the river here. We're talking millions and millions of dollars for a bridge that the city of Manassia may be liable for. Why not ask the people of the city of Manassia if they want it or not? Let them speak their mind, and let them say what they want. We had a lady up here tonight complaining about a 50 dollar increase on her taxes. My God, if we put this bridge in, and the city owns it, we end up paying millions, or even 100,000s, just for a, a bridge tender. That lady's not gonna like her next tax bill, I can tell you that. So I think the referendum is important. I'm glad it finally came. We've been talking about this, it sounds like, for years and years and years. Put it to a vote, and put it to rest. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some aldermen up here refreshed our memory. I did bring this up for a referendum, and it was voted down by this council, and Alderman Nichols is one of them. She voted it down, and...
When was that, Alderman Taylor?
Yeah, it's, it's in the minutes. I'll show you.
Okay.
So anyways, you know, I watch, I watched the state, and, and I'm kind of disappointed that this million-dollar figure got tossed out there with the bridge weight limit, you know, it's, you know, it's ridiculous. And I watched the state meetings, and not one time have I seen them say, "You know, that city of Manassia has spent this, and, you know, boy, let's, you know, let's help that city of Manassia." No. They're dumping it downhill on us and burying us, you know? That's what they're doing here, folks, and it's, it's not good. And I, with that referendum question that I asked for, that, that failed, in June this year, the council voted five to three not to accept this bridge, and the mayor vetoed it. Now you've got one person in this community that's saying, "We want a bridge. We want this new bridge," and is sticking it to the taxpayers, and all I'm seeing is they've responding to the taxpayers throughout this community. On this past weekend, I had six phone calls on Sunday alone, just on this, this question, all in favor of a referendum. A referendum, like the people sitting here tonight, we represent them, and the people at home that are watching this, we represent them. And at no time would I want to take anything away from them if, on a big-ticket item. Alderman Grady, who's a financial background, absolutely correct. Millions and millions and millions of dollars the city is gonna spend on this bridge. And I know Alderman Kruger had some inflationary, back in June, inflationary numbers for us to look at, and it's in the millions of dollars. Once we own this bridge, right now, it'd be about 100,000 dollars a year to maintain it. I look at the DOT, and I look at their bridge building in the last 10 years, very poor. The Leo Frigo Bridge settled down, and I can't imagine what that cost. They built that bridge incorrectly. The Ray Nitschke Bridge in Green Bay, that is an open and closing bridge, that bridge has been down. It was just in the paper on the 11th and 12th, it was broke down in Green Bay again. Yeah, I was trying to get some numbers from the DOT for this meeting, but I know it's gotta be 20, 30 times that bridge has been broke down in the last 10 years. We don't have an engineering department that can handle it, so we're gonna have to call, say, "We got a bridge down." Well, you know, you got all the consultants you gotta bring in, then you gotta bring in a company to fix it, and just that one phone call, I'm sure, right out of the chute is, is tens and tens and tens of thousands of dollars, just to get somebody here to look at it, because we don't have the engineering department. The state of Wisconsin has all that. They have big pockets. A city of 17,000 people do not have the shoulders to maintain and, and own a bridge, especially a drop bridge. Some years back, the state of Wisconsin wanted to give the city of Manassia the Fox River locks here at Manassia. Well, we looked at three years before they closed.
Alderman Taylor, we're not talking about the Fox River locks at this point?
I'm talking about the DOT, Mayor, that the costs, in the state of Wisconsin, wanting to give us things, okay? Okay, but that, that, that cost us a lot of money, and we turned that down. And we don't need to own a, if the federal government said, "Here is the Manassia dam for you to own."
And we're not talking about the Manassia dam either this evening?
We cannot shoulder, I'm just trying to show these big-ticket items that the state, federal government, and that want us to own. Cities cannot own...
No one has asked us to own the dam.
Properties, pardon me?
No one has asked us to own the dam.
I understand that, Mayor, but what I'm seeing, these large-ticket items that are out there... these large-ticket items that are out there, they, everybody wants to keep pushing things down the road on, on us. And we can't afford it. And as another member of the public asked tonight, back in June, show us the money. Show us that we're not going to raise taxes. Show us where the hundreds and millions of dollars are going to come from for these projects. And nobody has showed that yet. And we had somebody in here tonight about raising taxes. I had conversations with people today on that. And why should a small community like this, why would we even want to take ownership of a bridge? Let the state of Wisconsin have their bridge. Let them deal with it. That's who deserves to own it. And they own it and quit kicking the can down the road and making us pay more taxes. And that's what the bottom line is. It's all about the money. And it's millions and millions and millions of dollars. And I don't know if Alderman Kruger will comment back in June when he put together that analysis of the inflationary numbers. Thank you.
Alderman Collier.
As far as the bridge, the old one versus the new, I know the footings will be excellent because they're excellent on this bridge because of the Rock Foundation. So I don't want to compare it to Green Bay bridges. As far as the big-ticket item, you can, well, four years ago, you could have kept the old bridge. Two years ago, you could have kept the old bridge. But the people in the councils voted to go forward. Penix J, this bridge, move forward. Now you can see this council that voted five-three. I look at the best deal, and the best deal today is taking a new bridge and not the old bridge and let the old bridge, because you can see, and you can believe the report you just got or not, that this bridge is getting downgraded all the time. Eventually, it's going to get downgraded. Then all of a sudden, if it gets shut down and the state can't fix it or replace it in two to five years, you want to try to live in Manasha with one bridge? I think at this time, we're painted in a corner. It's a terrible thing, but it's the best of two bad deals, the new bridge. Thank you.
Alderman Kruger.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's a little bit of sidetracking here. No matter how this referendum turns out when it's voted on, I mean, everybody in the city could vote yes to the referendum. And it's not going to change anything with the DOT. It may, the DOT may just sit there and say, hey, okay, you know, this is overwhelming. But I don't want the public or anybody else to get their hopes up thinking that this referendum is binding in any way. It's just an advisory referendum. And I don't think it should be played up as trying to imply that a yes vote on this or an overwhelming, well, yes vote is going to change the DOT's mind. Again, I think this should be looked at, at the moment, as a tool that we should have, at least in their pocket, if there's an overwhelming yes thing to be able to use to go back to the state and say, hey, look, we have this many people that don't want this either. Please figure out some, say, law or statute that you guys take responsibility to the bridge again. But I just don't want the public to think that this referendum is binding in any way because the DOT doesn't have to listen to the result of this in any size, shape, or fashion. Thank you.
Alderman Benner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Alderman Kruger for his just final statement that he just made because that was one of the things that I was going to touch on. But a couple of other things that come to my mind is, well, first, I would like to ask a quick question. For this to get on, to get on the ballot for a referendum, when do we have to know that that's the desire of, of this, of this body?
We would have to let the county clerks know by January, I think it's the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
There's a number of days because this will be going to the April ballot. So it would have to be at the January twenty-fourth. I, I would have to let the county clerks know what, yeah, what the referendum question would be.
The reason I ask that question is because, back in my mind, I'd like to make a motion to postpone all of that. It's not, I'm not making that right at this moment. The reason I say that is because there's a lot of things that was said tonight that would imply that we don't trust the DOT, that they gave us numbers of their investment. They've, it's implied that they don't, we don't necessarily agree the new assessment on the weight value of the bridge, things like that. And also Alderman Taylor is saying that he made a motion for this to be on a referendum. And I'd be interested in that because at the time that we were debating this...
Alderman Taylor, Alderman Benner has the floor.
Yeah, who else interrupted you right now?
So I'm curious about that because I think I would have been in favor of a referendum at that time. Because I don't disagree with the mindset that if we really feel that strongly about it, then the folks should have a say in it. It's just that this time, I feel like it's, it's bad timing to do that. And what the final outcome is, I think, is exactly what Alderman Kruger had articulated, that that's what, that it'd be that, it'd be strictly advisory to the state to say that we may disagree with that. But I look at other things. And when we were talking about the bridge, you know, we were talking about part also, you know, things coming up, and that's the reconstruction of our downtown. Well, we're going to talk about that tonight. And to me, that's all part of the same package. If we're reconstructing the downtown, the bridge, the roundabouts, the traffic flow, how we're approaching our investment towards our city, towards business, towards our, towards our total image. And to me, this is part of that, that I feel strongly about that is important to this community. And I think we should have it. And, and sometimes having some control is, is to our benefit as well. But, you know, we have a very strong relationship with the state as we've seen through many grant programs that we've received from the state, through, never had problems getting financing through the state as we've struggled through a lot of our steam plant issues and things.
What is your point of order, Alderman Taylor? I, I would agree that we're not talking about grants, if you want to.
I, I respect that. And I, I just, really, my dialogue was towards our relationship with the state. And, and that anything that we would do here or imply here, or things that we've stated here of mistrust between us and the state, I'm just concerned about our own image and that we project that responsibly, that if we're going to state some of these things, that we actually get facts and we talk about them. And so at this time, I don't think it's a crisis that we get this decided tonight. I'd like to make a motion to postpone and come back with those facts and figures that were discussed here tonight, the potential for a referendum that was stated some time ago, possibly, the, the dollars that the state has invested and whatever it may be for the weight limits that were put on the bridge. And, and that it's implied that some of that could have been out of convenience and things like that. And so I'd like to see, I'd like to see some of those facts come back to us and, and continue the dialogue at another time.
There's a motion to postpone on the floor, except for the attorney is going after me, so I'm not sure what she's going to say.
If I can just ask, when?
The motion to postpone would be for the next meeting.
Okay, to the next meeting? Is there a second? There's a motion, a second? And from Alderman Collier, postponing is, I always forget, debatable? Okay. So right now, we would just be speaking on postponing. Does anyone have discussion on postponing? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is time of the essence here. If this council doesn't believe they represent the public, the public will, I've heard members of the public say they, they'll pass papers for a referendum. So that pushes them back in a real tight timetable. So it's just a, a stall tactics here by people that aren't going to vote for it anyways.
Alderman Grady.
My question would be to the council, the next meeting is January second. Are we all going to be here on January second for that meeting?
I'm planning on being here.
I think it's the second, right? Two thousand, so. Right now, we've got a full body. So postponing, I understand, to get some answers and some questions. But it's still, the topic is, do we, do we offer referendum to this, to the people? And as Alderman Kruger stated too, it does not mean, yes, you're going to get a bridge, or no, you're not going to get a, a new bridge. It's just get it out there. And so the idea to postpone would probably, I would probably say no.
Any further discussion on postponing? Alderman Taylor?
By postponing here too, we take this away from, this referendum is to let the people vote on it, and it's also to let our state legislature know and our state senators know what the people think here. They're the decisions makers in Madison. It's not up to the DOT. These are the people that represent us...
Alderman Taylor, how does this relate to postponing?
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, the item on the floor right now is to postpone to the January second meeting. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion fails on roll call three, five.
Is there any further discussion on the question? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote on the question?
Motion carries on, roll call five, three.
Item N is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening? Sir, we need to get the microphone back. But if you could come up and, if we could get your name and address for the record then, as well.
I'm sorry, it's not on.
Oh, did I turn the wrong one on?
There you go.
There we go, sorry.
Dave Buella, twenty thirty-two Dreamfield Lane. Been interesting to watch tonight. We're right where we were last summer. It seems, on one hand, we talked, it was talked that you represent us. And in other cases, that representation is withdrawn. So if I were to be the one to start a petition to get a referendum, there's not time. Kind of the sentiments, to me, came out that that might be enough to have you agree to have this, this referendum. Someone was talking two sides of representation. My bottom line on the bridge is I really don't believe that any municipality should own things like, things that they don't need to own. And especially a city like Manasha with the tax base that's here. My property, I've only been here nine or ten years, and my property taxes have gone up twenty-five percent. To me, where I lived before, they went up twenty-five percent in twenty-five years. It's phenomenal, especially with the two thousand eight, nine, ten flat growth. This just seems like we shouldn't be accepting financial obligations that we absolutely do not need to accept. And property taxes are quite high. Mine went up two hundred bucks this year. So, and of my twenty-five percent, only two hundred, only what, six percent was self-influenced. But I'm concerned about controlling costs, accepting responsibility for things that are really not ours to, to share. And I can get this in front of the people. And when, when the referendum is written, put, put financial information in it or have a, a paper that you can cite. Go to this website or whatever to, to get the estimates so that voters know what they're, what they're voting for. So really don't follow the, the zeal to have the roundabout and the other bridge construction at our nickel. Thanks. Thank you.
Good evening. Randy Repela, eleven twenty-eight Southfield Drive, Manasha. Five to three, what a number. Five to three was the number that the current council voted to turn down the bridge in June. But now five to three was the same number that was accepted to have the, have the referendum. It worked one way, but it didn't work when they, it was five to three back in June. I don't understand why it didn't work. It was turned down five to three in June. But now five to three, it's acceptable to have a referendum, which I agree. We should have one. We should have had one four years ago before there was any vote from the aldermen to decide on the bridge. The people should have had the referendum placed then. And then you guys could have used their ideas to base your vote on. All right. With that being said, what's going to happen now if the people vote to not support the, the new bridge? Okay? That's my sentiment, what will happen? Well, right, that will, what will that do? Well, it'll be brought back to say, well, the current council voted it down five to three. They don't want the new bridge either. Well, then it's going to end up being pointed on who made the deciding factor to have the bridge, which it'll go back to Mayor Merks. Okay? And I just think that's just creating problems for the city of Manasha. I just wish we would get together and would have gone off that five to three vote back in June rather than parlaying this whole episode. So just disappointed the way that this council has been working. I don't know how you can be changed. But I wish the five to three vote would have been good enough in June because it was good enough today. It wasn't that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing, seeing no one else, is there a motion to adjourn? Alderman Zelinski.
Thank you, Mayor.
What is...
At this time, before we move, I want to wish everybody, especially the people who will watch this and the folks who took the time to come and watch our council meeting this evening, a joyous, happy holidays. And I'll move that we adjourn.
All those in favor? Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.